Good evening, welcome to the school board meeting. It's Monday, April 27th, 2020, 6 o'clock. We're in the Susan Tully-Lagley Boardroom, the 1887 building. I'd like to call the meeting and ask Mr. Tully to call.
Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Gayheart.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
Ms. Deggner.
Here.
Ms. Gotcha.
Here.
We will note that Ms. Gotcha, Ms. Deggner, and Mr. Martel are all joining us.
We do have a quorum. We will continue. I will note that this meeting is a notice per state statute. Do we have any community participation? Anyone online or? All right, we'll dispense with reading that. Move on to temporary suspension of the school board policy 183 voting methods. Jason, do you want to go over that?
Okay. Yes, and the school district has a policy 183 that allows for, in the reorganizational meeting of the school board, for us to have a secret ballot if desired and/or requested. It is not something that's required by state statute, but it is allowable by state statute, legal. After having some meetings with them, in one of their meetings, they recommended, because of the complications of the virtual and/or the legalities or not having a clear, defined law related to taking secret ballots online, they recommended that school boards with that provision, suspend school board policy 183 for this meeting only and do away with these secret ballots for the reorganizational meeting. This is their recommendation. So we have that as an agenda item for the board to consider. If the board does not want to suspend that, then I can create Google form for each of the provisions and we can attempt to do the secret ballot. The concern that legal had is they're not certain whether it's legal. But we can.
I, I, you know, nothing wrong with suspending temporarily. It's not like we have new people. You know, we're continuing with what we have. So I personally have been on a long time and I don't see a problem with it.
I agree. No, no need to have it secret.
So then we would need a motion to do that.
I move to approve the temporary suspension of school board policy 183 voting methods as presented.
Sir, second.
Okay.
Is there a second to, sorry. It's been moved and seconded to approve the temporary suspension of school board policy 183 voting methods as presented. Let's do a roll call vote on that.
All right, Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Deggner.
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Motion carried. So next we have election of the school board officers. As the sitting president, I will yield the chair to Mrs. Fisher to begin that.
So I'm going to ask for nominations for the office of president.
I would like to nominate Matt O'Donnell for president.
Um, so we have one nomination. I'm going to open it back up if there's any other nominations for president of the school board. And once again, do we have any other nominations for president of the school board? Um, so hearing that we only have one, I need a motion to close the nominations.
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Um, okay, we need to vote on that. So we could just do a.
We're doing a roll call.
Yeah, you have to do a roll call.
Well, now this is just for to close the nominations.
Yeah, but according to policy, when we have.
Once motion to close the nomination has been made, seconded and passed. So we're not voting for your office yet, but the policy says we have to do that by roll call.
We have to do everything by roll call because of the.
Temperatures.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. So, so, Mr. Pennler, could you do roll call?
Yep, I'm just going to keep the same order, so.
Sure.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Deggner.
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay, um, well, I guess pass the board may vote for it. So now we're going to vote by the, for the office. So everyone in favor of Matt being president of the school board, um, we're going to do it again. Uh, we need a motion. Well, we did. We did. So now we're going to vote on that. Sorry about that. I always get confused with this every time.
Roll her up.
So roll call vote.
I think, I think it says a motion to close nominations and that a majority vote.
We could have done all of them together.
We could, we could have done it together. So how you did it was just the motion to close it.
Yeah, right, right.
So now we're going to do a motion.
I know, and that's why it's always.
But you could do a vote of a motion to close the nomination and cast a majority.
But I didn't. So now we have to do it.
We did, all right.
All right. So I, I, the same words, I say yes.
All right. All right, Mrs. Fisher says yes. Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Deggner.
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha.
Okay, Matt, would you accept president? Okay, go.
Now we need to move on to vice president to have a nomination for vice president.
I'll nominate Jenny Ray. Or, I mean, Barbara Fisher.
I was looking at her. She's like, oh, sorry. I woke you up.
I know, I just saw you. I'm all green.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Sorry.
No.
Any other nominations? Not hearing any. I would ask that a, we could, we vote to close nominations and cast a majority vote for Barbara Fisher as vice president. Do we have a motion for that? Is there a second?
Second.
Moving and seconded to close nominations and cast a majority vote for Barbara Fisher as vice president. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Deggner.
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Motion carried. Mrs. Fisher will be accepted. All right, then we need a clerk. Current clerk is Jenny Ray.
I nominate Jenny Ray as clerk.
Any nomination for Jenny Ray as clerk? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Not hearing any, I would ask that we have a motion to close nominations and cast a majority vote for Jenny Ray as clerk. Do I vote?
Some.
And a second?
Second.
Moving and seconded to close nomination, cast a majority vote for Jenny Ray as clerk. Roll call vote, please.
Barbara Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Deggner.
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Yes. I did everything I had. Oh.
I'll let you guys start.
Do you want to go first? I'm first. The last person to touch it is, they have rules, like mask, gloves.
Lights off.
I have.
No, I didn't touch it.
You know what?
Love six.
Five to love. We can't wipe. Yeah. Each one of them, I mean.
Oh, you mean there's.
Well, how long has it been since they've been touched? Yeah.
I haven't seen.
You know what? You have plenty of time to wait three, five days.
I was just going to say, if you wait a couple of days.
Yeah, I would do that.
Leave them out on the counter.
Three days for a print, we're fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, fine.
Back to business.
Back to business. Next we need a treasurer. Our current treasurer is Julie.
I nominate Julie Ingersoll for treasurer.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have, oh, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Not hearing any, I would ask that for a motion to close nominations and cast majority vote for Julie Ingersoll.
Salute.
Second. Okay, moving and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray. Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Whitehead.
Yes.
Miss, I thought you accidentally slipped in to make this. Sorry. Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Julia, would you?
Yes, I accept.
And last, we need a deputy clerk. Our current deputy clerk is Mr. Scarrow.
I nominate Mr. Scarrow for deputy clerk.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Not hearing any, I'd ask that we, for a motion to close nominations, cast majority vote for Mr. Scarrow for deputy clerk. A second?
Second.
Moving and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Deggner.
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Motion carried. Yes. All right, I think that ends our school board officer positions. And we can move on to approval of our school board meeting minutes. Those should be attached to your agenda for the regular session and then closed session I passed out beforehand. Any questions on that? Not hearing any.
I move to approve minutes of the April 13th, 2020, regular and closed sessions school board meeting as presented.
Uh, we should probably do those separately.
Because I don't have the copies.
So just do the regular first.
Okay. I move to.
From both? Yeah, it'll carry either way. So it'd be fine.
That'd be fine. All right.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, so we moved and seconded to approve the minutes of April 13th, 2020, regular and closed sessions school board meeting minutes as presented. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Epstein.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Jane.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Deggner.
I think it's stained, right?
Yeah, I would say two more there for the close. Um, and Ms. Gotcha.
I'm stained.
All right. Motion carried. All right, general fund bills, Mr. Trun. The general other fund bills this evening cover checks number 139729 through 139811. ACH check numbers 291 through 297 and two voided checks, 137859 and 139097. In the total amount of $160,097.85. Probably the smallest bill this.
Looking this way, all of a sudden, I've been ordering a lot more from Amazon and this Amazon order still is pretty big here, but it's so easy not to have to go shopping.
Surprisingly, the food service bill is almost the largest component here.
Yeah.
But there was a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills in your board packet. And then following the bill listing, there's a copy of the treasurer's report to the board. Questions for Mr. Trun? Not hearing any. So looking for a motion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of April 27th, 2020. Check numbers 139729 to 139811. ACH check numbers 291 to 297 and voided check numbers 137859 and 139097. In the combined amount of $160,097.85 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the general fund bills of April 27th, 2020. Checks number 139729 to 139811. ACH check number 291 to 297 and voided check numbers 137859 to 139097. The combined amount of $160,097.85 as presented. Roll call.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Deggner.
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Very. Construction manager services for St. Pat's. Uh, this evening, the, the school board is being asked to consider approving two different service contracts relating to the St. Pat's uh, construction renovation project. The first one is for construction manager services and the second one is for architectural services. The proposals has also been reviewed by the buildings and ground committee. For construction manager services, we reached out to C.G. Schmidt, who we work with as a school district for a number of years and is part of maybe a process just to, to bring everyone kind of up to speed in terms of, back in 2015, when we had that referendum, we went through a process where we did statement of qualification requests for multiple proposals for both architects and construction managers. From that, we did ask them to submit proposals, address a number of questions, and then brought those finalists to this room and they did full school board interviews. And at that time, we did hire C.G. Schmidt for the construction manager. Obviously, based on their services, we, we kind of reached out to them early in this project process to get dollars and cents in terms of what the project would cost. They're proposing basically in terms of fees, the same exact fees that they proposed back in 2015. Um, the staff that they have assigned to the project is basically the same project manager, the same senior manager. In terms of services, we talked internally about how their performance has been well for the school district. They've been honest. They've been responsive. They've been on time, all very positive kind of thing. So it seemed like a natural in terms of C.G. Schmidt for that role. They've also been real responsive in, in dealing with any questions or problems that come up on any of those projects. Typically, they do like a two-year warranty. Beyond two years, they're still responding. We haven't had a lot of things, but they still respond to that. Another advantage possibly going forward is having them on site. If we do experience any problems with anything else, they're here. Um, and there is an advantage to that. So I think that's a recommendation then for construction manager. I know these are separate motions, but it's okay. I'll kind of run into the architect services. At that time, when we did the, do the interviews, we had two architectural firms. Epstein Uen was the one we selected for the 15 and 16 project. The other one we looked at closely at that time was Kio Henry. And as we're looking at this project, it seemed to be a nice alignment for a number of reasons. They're local. They've done similar type projects, particularly the Lake Chana School District and their elementary schools. Their fees, they've got a range of fees that really represent closely to what we had with Epstein Uen. Epstein Uen was, I think, 7.25 to 7.5, depending on the building. And you'll see in their schedule, they've got a little bit of a range, but if you look at the overall, it's right around a 7%. We're probably likely to have fewer reimbursable expenses because they're right here in town, which is a nice advantage. So those are kind of the recommendations that we have in terms of those two service providers.
I would just add that with C.G. Schmidt's percentage and that pricing coming in right about where they were on the prior project is, is a good rate, in my opinion, because it doesn't reflect any increase, you know, in the industry over the past few years and also because it's a much smaller project. And when we did the bidding previously, smaller projects generally toss a higher percentage. And likely for Kio and Henry and that architectural firm's service fees to come in less than what Epstein Uen's was. And then couple that with the fact that wasn't Epstein Uen's fee for a smaller sized project. Their percentage rate did fall. So I think it's competitive on both fronts.
Any questions for Mr. Trun? Paul, you were pretty heavily involved with C.G. Schmidt.
Yeah, and I was very, very pleased with dealing with them. They were very receptive to any input that we had and they could answer just about anything that we brought forward.
Did they come in under budget on that or at budget?
They've come under or at. I mean, I think the last one, they were slightly under and then we ended up using some of those funds for the softball. We ended up adding a few extra things.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Softball.
I do remember that now, yeah.
But they have a lot of contingency built into everything.
Yes.
So, you know, theoretically, contingency here, accident contingency here.
Yeah.
And they've already looked at the school several times, more in depth second time, but, but they've been out there. So they have a good feel for the, for the location and the building and I do like.
They, they definitely came in under for the original scope that we had asked. And I think some of the feedback that I gave to them, it was the learning process for me last week as well, was I would prefer going in having even more contingency because there's things that you end up wanting to do that you didn't think of when you first started off. So I think this project coming in, it's, they're pretty confident with where the numbers are and what it's going to take. But, um, yeah, they, they definitely came in. It's, we used the entire budget because as we went in the process, there were things that.
Yeah, so many unknowns, especially, you know, how to build a building or even any of our buildings. You know, you take walls out, you never know. But they've been very good about more or less doing the wag estimates and coming up right on.
And I like that they would add those additional items. I don't recall them ever charging us like an additional change, but you'll hear about that to really watch because a lot of companies will.
So they have to charge it now.
They didn't charge us a single change fee.
That's nice.
As you change your money.
And it's construction manager, all components, I, I know the board knows this, will be bid out. So we'll have, you know, competition for all the trades to compete in that. In the past, C.G. Schmidt was interested in some of the work. I think they, they bid on like the flat work, doing some of the cement. So we had them submit their bid, their bid at least 24 hours in advance. And I think for one of the projects, they were a little bid and the second project, they weren't. So.
But I, I do think that's an important point as well because there are other local contractors or construction management firms.
Yeah.
And they are welcome to bid on.
Right, and we have, we've used, we've used them in the past, so local. So right now, it's really important, but we also still have to balance the costs.
Charlie, Kio's been around a long time. You know, Dan, Dan Kio was my neighbor actually when I was a kid next door. So he was doing architecture back then. He designed my parents' house, I think, many, many years ago. I think he did the, if I remember right, Bill, and you would know, that they did the original high school.
Yes.
Yeah.
Dan was starting off at that house.
I was wearing a hard hat walking through there because I was in a buildings and grounds committee, yeah.
And I like that they're a local company.
They did the Jackson School project and that got converted to middle school. Other questions? Paul, anything else said?
No, I think we're fine.
And we need to do these separately. So I'd look for a motion to approve our construction manager services.
I move to approve C.G. Schmidt as the construction manager for the St. Pat's project as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So moved and seconded to approve C.G. Schmidt as the construction manager for the St. Pat's project as presented. Roll call.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Deggner.
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Motion carried. Now we need to approve our architect.
I move to approve Kio Henry and Associates as the architect for the St. Pat's project as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So I moved and seconded to approve Kio Henry and Associates as the architect for the St. Pat's project as presented. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Deggner.
Yes.
And Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Motion carried. So we'll look for both of them to get started. Reported discussion items, student, student reports.
All right, students, anything to report that you want to share with the board?
There's not a lot. Um, just that last Friday, um, the high school did leave the lights on from seven to nine for the seniors. So that was really cool. And then, um, there's more pickups. Um, and then kids are being asked this week at the high school to go in and get their things sometime this week. But that's about it.
Yeah, in addition to what, um, Kylie was saying, student council actually just, instead of our dodgeball tournament, we just hosted awareness week for Mackenzie last week. And thanks to some really generous families and just our school overall, we were able to raise $2,000 for Mackenzie in place of the dodgeball tournament. So really excited about that.
Great, thank you. All right, board member representation on the St. Pat's renovation team.
Uh, yes, in the past, whenever we've done the referendums of the renovation projects, typically we have a weekly or a bimonthly meeting with the construction manager and the contractors to review the project. And it's always been nice to have a board member on that team. Typically, they've come from the buildings and grounds committee. And after a buildings and grounds committee meeting, Paul volunteered to serve in that role again. He did that in the last referendum. And, um, both Mr. Scarrow and Mr. Gayheart volunteered to serve as backups to Paul. So it's just, it makes sure that we have another set of eyes and board representation there in case there's any other questions and it brings another perspective to the project. So we'd like to move forward with that unless there's any objections. We can certainly, there's no reason why we can't have more than one if someone's really itching that wants to attend a weekly meeting and they're, they're interesting the first few and, yeah.
First few.
Well, that from time to time. I learned a lot.
It should be quicker because it's not going to be ends.
When they said that, he kind of, we're not on a two-way.
It is important though, because they go through a lot of details and a lot of little decisions that are made. And, and if you want the project to come out how you want it, you got to meet that meeting before you put the show. So it's, they're very important. Yeah.
I think Paul did a good job last night. Um, referendum financing plan. I asked Robert W. Baird to put together kind of the financing plan for this referendum based on what kind of current rates look like today as opposed to back in December when they built them. So there's two sheets here. The first one is just basically a reprint of what we had prepared for the referendum. So I just wanted to have that there as a reference for you. And then if you, just go down to the second page of that. I'm sorry, okay, sorry. And then the second page is kind of looking at today's rates. How would this financing look? And I asked them, because I knew rates would be lower than with 3.25, what we saw back in December, to try to build the amortization schedule so we had kind of at least some kind of natural falloff in like five years, just to give the district another opportunity if there's other needs. So that's what they, they built here in terms of the financing plan. They, they built it on a 2% interest rate. Um, and then they also, I think, had in there what they call a bid bond. And, and what that is, is lenders to distinguish themselves. Um, and then they also, I think, had in there what they call a bid bond. And, and what that is, is lenders to distinguish themselves because the margin is so narrow. When these bids come in, they, they offer what's called a bid premium. So it's like an additional amount. And that's where the variance is in terms of determining the low bidder. So they assume that that would be the case because that's what they're seeing right now in the marketplace. And then that would be used to kind of offset and lower the, the tax levy. Right now, based on that, um, obviously we'd still be borrowing the same amount of dollars, but the interest cost over the entire amortization is almost a half a million dollars less than what we thought it was going to be back in December.
That's awesome.
So, um, that's the really good news. After I looked at this, one of the assumptions they did build into this, which seemed valid back in December, um, was an increase in the property valuation of about 2% a year, which is kind of what we've seen. What I asked them to do in the option two, which is the other PDF Jason, you were clicking on, is to, um, assume that for the next two years, just based on the economy and such, that we wouldn't see that kind of increase. And when you cost that out, it's still the same amount of dollars. It's, you don't have quite the fall off in the fifth year as you do under the other scenario. But I think that might make a little more sense just based on current conditions. I guess that's where I'm looking for some feedback from the board. When I talked to Mike Clark at Robert W. Baird, we thought, let's, let's wait a few weeks and see what happens in the market because there's a lot of jumping around right now. I don't know if any of you looked at even like mortgage refinancing. Early March rates were real reasonable, but today they're not as good as they were.
Right.
So, and they're kind of seeing that with the bond market. So they wanted to kind of wait and see in a couple of weeks. So give us some, some ability of maybe trying to lock in with the sales early as the last meeting in May or the first meeting in June with a close date in July. And, um, we're looking then at, at least on the, the closing on the property would be sometime later in July. So we'd have the proceeds for that purpose. So, um, that's kind of how we're looking at this. I, I, I just wanted to share that with the board if you had any strong feedback on that. But the more I looked at that increase in valuation, I, I don't know if that's a fair assumption today.
Depends on when, when.
I know.
They do their valuation, would do a reval, and we're in the middle of a reval, which timing is just kind of not good. But I don't know what the other munis are, where they're at. So, but I talked to a real estate agent today. Said houses that are 250 and under are selling, they're on the market for a couple of days. It's the more expensive are the ones that people are just staying put. Um, but there's not that many out there. So who knows? It just depends on how all this washes out.
We're seeing a flattening, I would say, of valuation. Materials aren't going up, you know, like they're in, on the new construction side, you know, we're, we're seeing a flattening of, of pricing. So I would.
But not a slowdown?
Not at all. We are busier than we were.
More interest rates and material costs.
Right, right. Depends on what situation they were in before.
Correct.
So if they've already planted, we may see a difference a year from now.
Yes.
It may, I think it'll take time for that to come back around. But I think, I think we're better off being conservative for now.
Our current bond mail rate bill is 1.89. Yeah, we're the combined mail rate.
Yeah, yeah. So that either scenario, we continue with that basically, but it's using that as the basis to determine the amortization schedule. So it comes back to the assumption on value and change and such. So, yeah, so we still hold true to what we told the public.
So, so when do we make a decision to lock it in?
There'll be, we'll have to pick a date. Part of the process is we have to complete what's called the official statement, which is a packet of information about the school district. That's already done. I did that the referendum evening, traditionally done at that evening. There's only parts of it that we do and then the financial statements and Baird does the other part. So that's part of this. And then the second part is a rating process through Moody's. So that's usually an interview kind of thing that Jason and I would usually participate in that. It's usually a representative on a Chicago office. So then we'll get a bond rating. And then it's a sale. And then the sale results will come back to the school board, usually during a regular school board meeting.
Any other questions? Can I move on then? First reading of revised policies.
All right. Going through our legal updates and looking at our policies, you know, as we always do, there's a number of policies for us to review that have been formed from the policy committee. All of these have already gone through that committee. We reviewed, so I'll go through these fairly quickly. First is the copyright compliance. We're recommending that we just strike the line in regards to fair use. Fair use is a term related to copyright where you can use certain materials for educational purposes and there's criteria related to that. All teachers are taught about that as you go through your education program and so forth. So, um, the legal recommendation though, when they're going through our policies, they recommend that we actually strike that portion itself. And just stopping at any point you guys have questions and you can go more in depth. Student scholarships. It was, more than anything else, cleaning up the language and looking at the scholarship foundation, uh, the question came up of, oh, a few months ago in relation to our students, because the scholarship foundation when it was created, we only had one high school, the Elkhorn area high school. So it was created under that original name, the Elkhorn area high school scholarship foundation. Um, since then, the alternative high school was created. And now we also have the options, um, virtual charter school. It's often been created. So we have additional high schools within the left, within the school district. So one of the questions that was going back to the scholarship foundation, do they need to change any bylaws if they want to open up the scholarships that they manage through their entity to all students in the Elkhorn area school district? Their statement was that, um, they do want those other scholarships that they manage through that, we need to go ahead and be open to other students within the Elkhorn area school district. Um, and that after their review from legal, that legal said they don't need to go and change any of their bylaws. It's all right, even though it was originally designated, you know, has that name Elkhorn area high school. But what we felt would help was to make sure that our policy language was reflective of the district level rather than the high school level, because we've also added a school since this policy was drafted. So it's striking the high school language and putting in the school district. And then we also, a significant change to it is that prior, previously we had had a restriction that, um, let's see, that the student in order to be eligible needed to be a student of the Elkhorn area scholarship for the last six trimesters in order to be eligible for those scholarships. What we included that they must be a resident student or have been enrolled for the last six trimesters. Now, meaning, and one of the reasons this came up is we felt that kids don't have control if they move into the scholarship. Um, in particular, I, I also have a concern over some potential liability of us being sued for discrimination. So for example, a military family gets transferred and they happen to settle in Elkhorn, which I know we have a couple of them. They work the other spaces over on the Great Lakes. Or they may be, you know, you know, different roles that puts them out here, a recruiting office, different things like that. Well, you don't want to be in a position where you're discriminating against a military child because they didn't move there until the end of their school career. So, but we also did not want to open it up to where people could say, well, you know, I'm not going to be a volunteer over here at this school, but maybe if I open a role to Elkhorn for the last part of my education, I can vault and jump up into that. So that's why we said if you're a resident student, you're eligible. If you're open enroll, the last six trimesters. Any questions on that?
Um, the only question I had is that first sentence in the second paragraph. It just, it just seems kind of abrupt and not complete. So literature concerning available scholarships shall be distributed to, or where, it, it used to say posted in the school building, but no, posted anywhere.
It, yeah.
But we, we said we didn't necessarily post, but you're right.
It just kind of falls off there. So shall be distributed to all students?
I like, what if, what if we changed the made available to all students?
Right. I just, I don't know. The language there just, it seems really, really vague.
Right, right. Well, I think because we forgot the posting.
I think where I got worried about made available is if somebody could know they exist or not.
But the intent of the distributor was that we wanted to push that.
We were pushing it out. Everyone, everyone got the information.
Email or?
We also didn't want to pin it down to what is that exact.
Right. That's why we took out the posting because.
But. But what if we turned something to all students?
Right. So I mean, we could do, we could do an email that says, you know, scholarship information is now available. Contact your.
But they might choose, you know what? Email's not working. Well, we want to do hard help.
Yeah. And that's fine. But it just, I feel like it's.
I just don't want to put it on the student staff to draw the information. I'd rather.
Yep, yep. Totally agree with you on that. I just feel like it was really kind of abruptly cut off.
It was. I think because we changed that language.
Is that why it's distributed to all students?
Right. That makes, that makes sense to me.
Then we can decide how it's done. And every school may be different as well.
Yeah. Eligible. That was the only other word that.
Because I don't want some of that. Um, equal opportunity employment. Another part of the, the legal review, updating our non-discrimination. Um, clause, it has a, an addition of bias there, which, um, when it comes to the employment, I think that's referring to that that individual may have a bias towards something. And what they're finding is employers are searching through social media posts, Twitter, things like that, that it's illegal to not hire someone because they have a bias towards chocolate cake and I like carrot cake. That's included.
A lot of Paul.
I think you're. Harassment. Um, we wanted to delete this one and because it's covered in 513. And then update policy 513 in accordance with legal's recommendations.
So we're not saying employee harassment, we're just saying harassment.
Yeah. It's no longer, they felt that it's just harassment. It's a large umbrella that covers everything. That was based on their recommendation. Um, use of information technology. Want to add the line that employees have no expectation, industry provide communication information. Resources, the school district has the right to inspect, monitor, or search such resources at any time. Uh, talks about the need to report if they feel that they've been compromised or passwords or identification. And and this does happen and it happens, um, sometimes with, I've had it happen where students have compromised the passwords and the employee was worried about being in trouble, then it reported. And a student was logging in on the employee's account and going to places they shouldn't have been doing and created a bigger issue than it needed to because if the employee had reported it, we could have changed the password and then, you know, not put that employee in a compromised situation. Um, so it just reiterates that. Uh, we did. What?
Want to he she gone again?
Yes.
I thought we took care of that.
No, there's a couple, I think.
Yep. Here's, here's our internet usage.
What I'll do then is I'll ask.
Put a note for Jody to go through.
Yeah. Jody on the pronouns, if you could change all the he's, she's to they or theirs. I'll have her update that. And then the, the mode of language was outdated. Um, we learned more about what that was. Um, yeah, just updating the email system of that aspect. We archive all emails just so everyone's aware. For seven years is the requirement. And those are saved on the, depends on how people handle it. If they delete the email, then it, it's harder to locate that for the individual because Google will delete, I think it's every three months. They'll clean up the, the delete file. Uh, we have an archive button and that's what I just use on all of them because if I want to go back and find it, I can go back and search all the archives. But our computer system, we can dig into and find any emails from back to seven years. That's the requirement. And that just keeps rolling.
We talk a lot here about facts. Do we really use facts that much? I mean, I at home, I hardly ever use, once in a blue moon, somebody does, but we, we're charging people a dollar for personal facts. I just, I'm wondering if people are using it.
We use it in HR for medical kind of stuff.
Okay.
They all use facts.
Okay, all right.
But you're right, there's much fewer.
Well, one time I got some personal health information on someone that didn't work for the town. And I contacted the medical facility right away and said, you sent this to the wrong place. I'll grind it. Oh, no. But it's really easy to do that, I think.
I think IEPs also come in sometimes.
Oh, okay.
They're, they'll use it for more secure documents.
Okay. As long as we, yeah, we use it. I just was curious.
Which I don't really, yeah.
Yeah. I was gonna say, how is it more secure? Does anybody?
Well, they said, like I said, they sent it to me and it was, no, no one I knew.
But I've had, there's probably two or three times a year where I can't submit it, whatever I'm signing or doing by any other method. Not very often, but.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to know that, but it would still be used because my kids will laugh. You still have a fax machine.
Question under the software. Number five. All right.
Number five.
Yeah, it's the installation of, um, it just has in parentheses, including screensaver is not provided as part of the district standard.
Where's?
At the very bottom, the very last end of the, last paragraph of the.
I only ask because I know the kids pick their own screensavers.
Yeah. So a lot of what the kids will do, um, is they'll go and like changing your background is not a problem. So they'll go and they'll flip a picture, but there are, you don't see it as much because I think a lot of people have gone away from those, you know, screensavers, those recent programs. But there is malware that people would build into those screensaver programs that you would download that have the whole theme. And so that's why they have that in there.
Okay.
We don't see the kids flipping their backgrounds.
Screensaver is like the old, the rat in the tunnel whenever we first caught.
Yeah.
Anyway, and it is a software that gets installed.
Right, right. Okay. So just changing a picture, background.
Okay.
Does it seem appropriate?
All right. Yeah.
Um, any other questions on that one? A conflict of interest. They, um, wanted to add a line, Wisconsin state statute provides codes of ethics for local officials, employees, tenants, all local officials are required to comply with that. I think that's critically important, but. They wanted to add that. And then we're recommending to delete the job sharing policy. We've, since I've been here for seven years, I think there's. policy. We've, since I've been here for seven years, I think there's been two explorations is what I would call it. We haven't had a formal request because once it's been explained that well, only one of you can carry the insurance. And now that you have to work 75% to do the insurance, we don't see any of those requests for the job sharing. And it's, you know, my feeling for the most part, we'll work with employees. We've done one-term leave every year. It seems we have one or two who, you know, need for whatever reason, what's going on in their life to take a leave of absence and grant those. But a job share typically isn't in the best interest of the child. It's not something that we couldn't do down the road if it's something that we wanted to explore, but we felt just eliminating it as a a policy that was kind of all a data practice and or what's practical means. Any questions on the first reading of the policies?
Recommendations of the district administrator personnel.
All right. We have quite a few recommendations on the personnel side. First, we have the resignation of Abigail Flash, who's been serving as a special education teacher's assistant for the school district at Jackson. We want to thank her for her service for the school district. Chandler Kaiser, who's been serving as a avid, kind of the avid tutor coordinator there. His schedule's changing and he'd like to go back to the tutor role. So we'll transfer him from the avid teaching assistant position to part-time avid tutor. Bailey Hart was selected and is recommended to serve as the high school agricultural teacher or an additional high school agricultural ed teacher. This is a new position for this coming school year. Michael Dahl has been selected to serve as the business teacher. He'd be replacing Dana, Dana Anderson. For the 2020, 2021 school year. Dana retired this year. Mark Lewandowski, who was selected as a high school English teacher. This is a new position for this coming year.
So is that just an additional English teacher or?
Yes. This is an additional English teacher. And then we have an English teacher who's replacing Ellen Lutheny. I mean, you could reverse the, the two. Then we have a Patrick Dopke, who's been selected to replace Gary Butters, who's retiring at the end of the school year. And then we also have Caitlin Wegman, who has been hired as a special education teacher. This is a new position for the next year as well. She's doing a moment.
Can you just tell us a little bit about the new teachers, like the new egg teacher, the new math teacher, where they came from?
Yes. Off the top of my head, I will do the best I can.
No, that's fine. Just because I saw that these.
I, I can't remember the, the app teacher is joining us from up in the Thorpe area. She's from Illinois area originally, and so she's getting closer to home. She's taught, I believe, two years up there and phenomenal references and did a really nice job. But then we think she'll be a good fit and a mix in the program. And then we have Michael Dahl, who's a former business ed teacher at Franklin Lake in Arrowhead. And he had transitioned out of that to work for an educational software company. He has a very strong background in computer science, but he didn't necessarily have the opportunity to explore all that. Although we have him more in the traditional business ed classes. Something that will be nice though is one of our largest teams that we have in the, in the high schools are esports team. We're over 90 kids this last year in the esports team. And Michael happens to be the president of the Esports Wisconsin Association. He has a lot of background and knowledge in there, which will be able to provide some support to Mr. Eisleroff. And as we move down the road, you know, Mr. Eisleroff, unless he changes minds, he's getting close to that retirement age as well. So we're always looking to be multiple people deep on, you know, those services for gifts and so forth. Mark Lewandowski is joining us from actually most recently Myanmar. He spent three years over there as an international teacher. He is from Wisconsin, originally from the Appleton area. And so we're excited to add him and add him back in Wisconsin. And then Alyssa Hochscheber is from Waterford originally, comes highly recommended as well. And she'll be joining the English team there too. She, very bright individual had started down and has worked as an editor on legal books. She was originally a law student, then really realized she had a lot of passion in teaching and shifted back over to English. And so we're excited to add her. Patrick Dop, Dopke is a math teacher. He's actually been over at Wilma for his entire career, but he lives right here in. I'm forgetting the name of the, the lake. It's right here in Lake Geneva.
Como?
No, Como, Lake Como. It was Lake, Lake Como. And I think Patrick, we're really excited about is it, it's hard to find math teachers who really want to teach those higher level math classes. He has an 85% passing rate on AP courses that he teaches down at Wilma, which is probably amongst the highest, not just in the state, but in the country. Does a phenomenal job with the kids, getting them there, always is at the school doing extra events and so forth. So we want to welcome Patrick. I think he's going to be a great addition to the team there. And then Caitlin Wegman, we have three special education openings and we kind of took advantage of when we were looking at that. She was an early applicant in the pool and special education, you gotta be pretty aggressive and going after and sticking up. Caitlin happens to be the fiance of Mark Lewandowski. And so when going through that and talking, we set up interviews and brought them down for a social distancing tour of the building. I felt if you've never been down to Alcorn, this is a big life decision you're both looking for. She can get a job anywhere, but she was also phenomenal, great recommendation. So she'll be joining us as well.
Nice.
And then we still have two more special education teachers. So, yeah. Aside from forgetting Lake Como, I.
Cause you think of it as Lake Geneva, right?
I, I will say this format with the online and the, the interviews, it's enabled me to be in those, the way to get them scheduled to be in every interview, which we always make sure there's a director in the interviews, but I'm not always available to be in on home, but I was.
Looking at the, the additional English teacher, are we offering more English offerings? Or just trying to reduce the loads on some of our teachers?
I, I think it's. I, I don't think it's an expansion of the offerings, Paul. It's just that the high schools hitting their highest level that they've been at. So there are going to be over a thousand students this next year. So adding those and, and the fact that our English classes were getting up to that 30 range across the board. It was, yeah. The reason why. It wasn't so much that they added additional sections that they needed.
Yeah. And I've always said that English teachers are like the specialties. They're so diverse and taking time to correct speeches or compositions takes so much more as individuals. So if they are getting large class sizes, it's just tapered a bit for them. But I was wondering if we were having more offerings with all the courses that are now coming available. Okay. And then the second one, Mr. Butters leaving, does the replacement have interest or something with Mr. Butters had quite a bit of the project lead the way, IED and things like that?
Yeah. So Mr. Dopke does not have background in the project lead the way. Wilma is a project lead the way school, but they house most of it within the tech ed department. But as part of that and in my portion and talking with him is, you know, making sure that he is open to it or willing to do that. But I believe they're going to use they, another staff member who has been in project lead the way, Mr. Malbert's in the past. He may shift over and pick up more of that.
Mr. Dopke.
Michael Thomas. Maybe got a section or two. So they're, they're looking at working with the staff, but I'd also like to get Mr. Dopke trained as well. So.
And I was also wondering then if Mr. Dahl, if he's into the e-games and stuff like that, if he'd be interested as well?
Yeah. See, he definitely will be in the, the CS.
Okay.
High insider security. So I, I see him as someone that we can bring on board and train to, when Mr. Eisleroff leaves, he has a very unique broad set of project lead the way courses that he handles. And so we'll have that backfilled and ready to.
Okay.
He won't have the physics background though. I, you know, Mr. Eisleroff does physics and computer science, which is not a common. Sort of, you know.
Right.
Yeah. It's not a common combination out there. So it'll be an interesting one to, to fill out. We need to look at. Any other questions on the staffing?
All right. Now is the confirmation of personal recommendation sheet.
So.
Second.
Second.
So move the second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for April 27th, 2020 as presented. Roll cover please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Dagnier.
Yes.
Ms. Gachcha.
Yes.
Motion carried. It's like school gifts is next, but you don't have any. So we'll move on to CISA two contract. Unless you came up with something, so.
No, I'll speak to, you know, a different form of giving of the district than you see the announcement. We gave the CISA two contract. Uh, this is just the annual contract renewal from, through CISA two.
Any changes from last year?
Rita, any significant changes? And I go to you because I usually, special education is where we typically go, but Mr. Truett, I don't believe there's no.
It's the same services, I think, that Rita has suggested in the past. I, I know the legal services, I, we pay a stipend for that, but based on the hours, it doesn't take many hours to get to that figure. So I think she's, that's a really good arrangement. And then the audiology and then I think deaf and hearing. So it's continuation of those three programs.
And I believe the price hasn't changed. I think contracts will not, will change.
Yeah.
Cause everybody's waiting to see what's happening too.
Yeah.
Other questions? Otherwise, looking for motion approved, CISA two contract.
I move to approve the 2020, 2021 CISA number two contract as presented.
There's a second?
Second.
I'll just approve the 2020, 2021 CISA two contract. I did roll cover please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Should I abstain since I'm on the CISA board? Okay. All right. Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Dagnier.
Yes.
Ms. Gachcha.
Yes.
2020 summer maintenance projects, Mr. Truett.
And these are additional projects that the buildings and ground committee took a look at as a result of the successful referendum and the additional dollars for maintenance. There's really three things here that the committee was recommending. The first is, is to continue with our LED lighting upgrade. This one would be for Westside School. Traditionally, we've been able to do these under like a three to four year payback and we just did them and, and pooped the, the savings. For Westside, it's going to take a little longer because of the type of lighting they have there and the structure of the building and the fixtures are going to be required as well. Supposed to just the tube replacements. So it's going to be a little more involved. So that's why it's listed there with the dollars. The second item is to try to continue the process of replacing the exterior doors at the high school. We did part of those last year. We got around kind of the backend. So this is kind of more in the west end and then the few doors on the east side of the main entry as well. So it's kind of completing then all of the older exterior doors, doors for the high school. And then the third one is looking at replacing the walking path between Jackson and the high school. If you ever kind of walk, that's a path that's been there for years. It's, it's asphalt paved, but it's in pretty bad shape. It crosses through Harris Park. So I have contacted the city. I talked to the city administrator. And we're going to set up a meeting to kind of look at maybe a shared project and shared participation financially. So the assumption I have here is kind of a 50 50 share, but haven't met with the city yet to finalize that. So. So those would be the three projects and we thought we could probably get going on those, yeah, this summer and finish them. Considering the contractors now are available actually to start now.
Right, right.
And with the buildings, the situation they are, we can't kind of kickstart some of the projects.
Are you not going up to the full 200 to just leave yourself some?
Just give, yeah. It's like 194,000. Just give us a little cushion because it will provide the opportunity even next June to maybe do some other needs that might come up.
Okay.
And get those done under the same budget.
Other questions? Looking for motion approved.
I move to approve the 2020 summer maintenance projects as presented.
There's a second? So move the second to approve the 2020 summer maintenance projects as presented. Roll cover please.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Um, sorry. Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Yes.
And Ms. Gachcha.
Yes.
Get a little red.
Summer school budget.
Happy budget.
Yeah. Assuming we have summer school, summer school budget.
Yeah. I know. I was wondering about that. Yeah.
Traditionally, the school board approved a summer school budget. So this, this is prepared kind of a student status co-program, which that's a fluid discussion right now in terms of what everyone looks like.
Right.
So it is subject to change. I know Mr. Frost and the other administrators are talking about that. It's likely to be more of a virtual kind of program. I think when it is and how that's going to look, we're still, I think we're surveying staff and surveying, going to be surveying parents to find out kind of what their interest level is. Right now, I believe for virtual kind of summer school, it only can be at the high school level, but the DPI is looking at changing the rules.
Okay.
So I think eventually it'll be K-12. They just have to go through their rule change process to get that to happen. So. Again, this might change a little bit. Traditionally, we've always offered a program that kind of paid for itself in terms of revenue cap and state aids. That's why I listed down there at the bottom that typically we receive about 74 upper school FTEs with our program and then 40% of that's calculated for the revenue cap. So that generates about 299,000 in terms of additional revenue cap and the program's about 216. So we try to keep that ratio relatively constant. So sometimes you'll hear districts for budget reasons may cut their summer school program, but reality, it's cutting their revenue cap at the same time. I'm sure some events, they understand that.
I think the business managers, this is the summer school business. In this. Class that day with a. The superintendent. Those looking for, not as much manager.
And it's always been popular here in Elkhorn.
Right.
Always been a product. Very, I mean, I remember Martian Han was a big thing. The kids did that, you know, and from the littlest things to, you know, to major. I mean, it's always been very popular.
So we are in the process of, just to give you a little more information, Mr. Frost is surveying the staff and he sent out another survey to that. About 80% of the staff originally. the staff originally that they wanted to do summer schools said they were willing to do it in a virtual environment if we need to.
Right.
We haven't pulled the trigger on that. I think all of us would rather wait and see what the current guidelines are. And to keep that in perspective, we're, we're, we've been in this environment for approximately six weeks now. We have.
It's like six years.
Six weeks until the end of school, then plus another weekend. We have seven weeks until the start date of summer school. So a lot could happen between now and then in regards to what format we could be in. More than likely, they're projecting that we'll still be in a format where you can't have large gatherings, really large gatherings. So we are planning and putting instruction in place where we can do the online or the virtual. Um, we will then survey parents and students and see what their desire is, what's that enrollment number. Basically, we'll need to reveal what that will look like. Uh, from the state level, there were some pieces of legislation when this first started where they requested, um, the schools be allowed to keep their summer school FTE carryover from the prior year because they know that this summer school FTE that, you know, the additional students that's added to our revenue limit from summer school really helps generate the revenue to cover the summer school costs the following. So you're almost working a, a year behind on the revenue limit that you're generating. But the legislature, they did not pass that. Uh, but the shifting to virtual is a rule through DPI and that's something that the governor can approve, the governor after the legislature. So we know that the governor's supportive of doing the virtual. It's just going through the process to set it up. And for us, we will want as many students, one, to keep the connection, have a bit of the work and the activities that are going on, but two, also to be able to generate the, the revenue needed to cover next year's summer school. Um, assuming in a way of that basically.
Would be capped if it goes virtual for the high school level, like PE usually is capped and there's lottery and.
I don't know. That's a good question.
And then there's usually.
And I don't know if PE's helped to turn kids away the last couple of years. Did they?
Yeah.
All right.
Or they did two years ago.
Two years ago? Yeah. I don't know if they did the last couple. I think we put some things in place, but I'll follow up on that.
Well, the, uh. Health went blended.
Uh huh.
Between like.
We made some changes in the last couple of years since Mr. McBurney got here and I put some, that's something that I feel passionately about that I don't want kids turned away from that. I want those opportunities there and the flexibility. So I would have to double check, but I don't think the past couple of years, I don't think they have to turn away. Um, on that. And we even built in more flexibility. It's had like a family vacation.
Right.
It used to be more stringent. You can't miss one in three days.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that's not there anymore either. So that's gone. That's been gone for the past. There's bigger flexibility.
Well, the more we can have available, I think, this year, the better, however it comes out, because I think kids need that contact and the families are appreciating it too.
Yeah.
So.
Is it a policy that they have to do with them?
I believe if it's not formal board policy, it's in the hand. In short, yes. And that was all the dates back to when the pool was approved. I think there was a guarantee made that, hey, if we pass the pool, we'll make sure that every kid learns how to swim. So that's my understanding of the history of that.
You can.
So everyone has to take PE one.
But you can. You can get, take the class without swimming. My son did that because he had allergies to.
Yeah, I'm sure they've got some.
So he, he just took.
One option.
He did not. It took us years to figure out what his problem was every time he went to the pool.
So. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So, but we didn't. So when he got to high school, he just lived with himself.
So that, that's a good question. I'll have to, um, have to look into that.
A lot of moving parts. Yeah.
All right. Other questions?
Uh, here, name of the.
So long.
And a second.
Okay.
So moved in second to approve the 2020 summer school budget as presented.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Wright.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Dagner.
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha.
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, announcements.
All right, um. Just want to run this by the more because the second board meeting in May will be on Memorial Day or the second Monday in May is on Memorial Day. So I moved forward meetings to Tuesday, May 26th. And I have a number of updates from DPI. Um, but we had a number of meetings yesterday, which were statewide for superintendents. They really cautioned against ending school early. Uh, I was not aware. I would not have recommended this, but apparently my association had really pressed for the governor to close schools through the remainder of the year for planning purposes. He was reticent to do that. He was wanting to take it more on a two week at a time, which I thought was kind of weird that all of a sudden he chose to close it down. It's because there were groups really lobbying and pushing to close schools down through the end of the year. But they also really cautioned, you're now seeing some schools, because there's a waiver out there, well, we can get a waiver because of COVID that we don't have to teach all the minutes. Some schools are choosing to close before the end of the original calendar school year. And they're saying, hey, absolutely do not do this. That's not what the governor wants. That's not what the legislature wants. That's not the intent of it. Just because legally you can do that now, teach to the end and support your kids and the families.
Yeah.
That's what they all want. Um, and they haven't said that there's any consequence or penalty to that, but you can read between the lines. But it's going to be hard to get legislative support for school funding if schools are just closing up and saying, well, we're going to be done for the year, even though you have the monies to operate through the whole year this year.
Right.
So that's one caveat. We're in good shape. We're not closing. We're not having discussions of it. It's, we're teaching to the end. We've always been that way. Um, buildings and grounds under the governor's order are closed with a few exceptions like daycares, blood drives, food service. Um, that could be operated on there. Things like playgrounds, we are ordered to have those closed. Now. There's what are called public use lands. Those are typically the lands that aren't fenced off, like Market Street, those grass filled there. You can leave those open and you don't have to, um, so long as you don't go out and advertise, hey, public community, come and use our open lands. Uh, we don't have to police that. That's left up to local, uh, municipalities to handle that. The, the tennis court, if we leave the doors open and we're not advertising, hey, come and use the tennis courts, you know, that's up to them and or whether or not they'll go on for three months.
That one.
Any of those public use things. Yep. Now, the police department, they did ask us to put signs up for the playgrounds because they didn't want, you know, people on those. And that is spelled out in the order. Um, if we start advertising, hey, our gates unlocked, come in, you can walk on the track, then it becomes our responsibility to police whether people are keeping social distancing.
We don't need to do that.
And the gathering relates that. So we're not going to advertise anything there. But there are a lot of schools that they just don't want those areas up. Um, so that was kind of interesting. I, I would call it more of a gray area. Um, they're feeling, and I don't, I think it's way too early to prognosticate this, but they're feeling that the fall likely will look different and that we'll have to, um, potentially not be able to have all kids back in the building all together at the same time. That we'll have to get creative and maybe some AB days, blended learning, online learning, certain things like that. Um, we have the, the federal CARES Act that everybody has heard about. A portion of that, I believe, was that Wisconsin received 200 million for schools from the CARES Act?
Oh.
Uh, off the top of my head, I believe we received 200 million as a state or to help schools that had expenses related to the COVID dollars. And they're going to make those monies available through the Title I distribution. So like where we had to go and we acquired some more hotspots, we were pretty, in pretty good shape. We had all the computers we needed, but we did get a few more hotspots. Um, that can be covered through that. Where we're, the other portion that can be covered through that is by, we made a commitment to keep people whole. Um, not only, um, are those monies available to, to help us with that, but if you do not keep people whole, you jeopardize what to receive the COVID numbers. So you may read and see that certain school districts have done furloughs or layoffs. I know a couple of you may even be, have been approached like, well, why are you, you know, still paying your spring coaches? Um, that's the question that, that has come up. And the reason why the, the fed and the states, they're basically taking the stand. So if you have the budgetary monies to pay your people, we're giving you additional monies for any incurred expenses.
Right.
If you lay them off, you're just dumping them back to the unemployment. And now if you think you're going to get double paid for that, you're kind of kidding yourself.
Right.
That's the read between the lines that they're sharing. So if you do get those questions, aside from the fact that we're employing and, and having people work and continue to work and like our spring sports, if that question comes up, our coaches are still working virtually and blended with them. And we're hoping that they might get to have some form of. A participation in July is what they're still holding out some hope for. Um, that may not be an official, it will not be WIAS sanction, but they did leave that door open by saying that you could do a club type, um, organization of the events so long as you include seniors. So I know our conference A Ds are talking, you know, chatting together like, hey, can we do a truck meet or a couple, and still run something through where you could hold a conference championship performance for the kids. Um, so again, they directed that everybody needs to keep all people employed. To the best of your ability. The term they actually use is, um, practical, as practical, meaning I think schools may be able to demonstrate that, look, this is a loss. This program was dependent upon this revenue, which we no longer have. Therefore, we need to furlough. That may be an appropriate, um, furloughing. But otherwise, they're saying you need to keep everybody employed. And then I already talked about the real change for summer school. So it was a lot of that initial information. Um, I had, Representative Lautenbach is very grateful. She forwarded the state to get a daily or weekly briefing. And, um. I think it was like 28 pages long from the governor's office related to all the plan and all the details to it. So it's very comprehensive on the backend. We see very consumable portions on, on the front. It's obviously, but that's all the information I have. Not related to that. Oh, I wanted to share too, and I did put that in my announcement notes. Our mail service for, I think they did link it on the board notes. I wanted to pull this up.
I read an article or, I didn't read the whole article, but they talked about, hey, just add 20 minutes to your day next year and that will cover all the time you've lost. And I thought it's not just so easy to add 20 minutes. It would be okay if you were elementary and you had one teacher and you didn't.
Do they realize what everything that that affects?
I know. I, I, I know. And it was like, I read the, the first paragraph and I thought it's not worth reading.
Wanted to share one more item with you that I think is, we've heard a lot of positive feedbacks from the community and, uh. Wow. Our, our meal program and I, a lot of credit to Hesher and really want to thank the bus company for stepping up and sharing. I, when we look at the participation around the, um, area, just our numbers of the kids that were able to access it and, um, you have to double this number.
Right.
Because this includes breakfast and lunch. So really it's two numbers representing an individual. So, and we've kind of stabilized now, um, on those number of meals. It's sitting right around 1,100 to 1,200 a day. Um, but again, double that. So it's about 2,400 meals a day that is being serviced. Um, we took on, um, the desire to, to go ahead and make sure that we had adult meals available for those in need. And that's the criteria. If you feel like you're in need and would benefit from a meal. And the Elkhorn Area School District Education Foundation, um. Is basically handling the collection of the funds and then transferring to the school district and the donations. And that's why I say when we say we didn't show any gifts, um, there on that site, within this last timeframe, we may have had our largest gift contribution. It's just they're going through the education foundation. Um, the booster club contributed $5,000. The Elkhorn Youth Center, they closed out their account. They donated 750 plus dollars to that. Um, T-shirt sales for the state, Elkhorn Strong was over $500 and, um, just thousands of dollars in that. And what was really humbling is I had a community member contacting me. And, uh, one of the members of the Elkhorn Education Foundation and she said, you know, my, um, boss heard about the program and, you know, saw the website and what we're doing and how it's laid out and really likes that. And yes, how much more is needed to get us through the remainder of the year? And we were on track with the cost, but you can see this is accumulated mill cost and we projected it out. It looked like it was going to run us about 40 to 45,000 dollars to get through the end of the year. And, um, this individual who wishes to remain anonymous made a $25,000 donation to cover the remainder of the cost to get us through the end of the year for the adult. So we know we're covered through the regular scheduled school year for the adult mill portion. We do get a reimbursement for the student mills. Um, and then I think the next part of our discussion is looking at what do we, what does it look like? Cause it is a summer food service meal program. We're looking at what does that look like for summer? And we've had dozens of individuals donate and send money in for that cost too. So, uh, we've raised almost $45,000 or received almost $45,000 of gifts through that education foundation on behalf of the.
And the Facebook, um, every once in a while somebody will come up. I did say, I, I, you know, just seems to have been really, really positive about this, that they are amazed that we are doing it. And I, I think I, at one point I said, community supports your community. That's what we're all about.
Uh, Jason, have, have there been any determinations yet of what a graduation might look like or when or?
Yeah. So, um, originally we were looking at and talking about postponing the graduation date. Um, so later timeframe. And I know that, um, Mr. Trotter in the high school, I'm curious if the students, um. You know, Rachel or Zager and Scott, have you guys received an email yet from the administration or not yet?
Um, not regarding graduation specifically.
So they're going to be sending out a communication. They did send out, I saw an email that ran out to the parents that if you had ideas or suggestions as to what you'd like to see. And we have a lot of ideas and suggestions, but we, we have a lot of people who want to share those. And so we want to collect that and, um, take all that into consideration. We're exploring the different options right now, but it looks like because all indications are that you're not going to be able to have large group gatherings even in August. So we're defaulting back to that original date and looking at a different format. How can we do that? One of the formats that I really like is the possibility of like, uh, basically a car break where they drive through to get their diploma. And then we broadcast it using either social media or the radio. Um, right before now, I got like a neighboring superintendent, used to work here. They, they checked with a company out in California. They want $10,000 to do this online production. So there's companies out there willing to make them look really sharp. We looked through the Jostens, we said on the webinars, I wasn't in, impressed with that. So I think we're going to come up with a nice plan that can involve the students as best we can. And we're leaning towards sticking with the original graduation date. But ultimately, we want to take the ideas, kind of narrow it down to what's practical, what we can do and manage, and then have the students have input on it, what they want. Cause it's really their ceremony.
Right.
And their event. So we want them to kind of share what, what they want to see from that. So we're in that process.
So the follow-up with the, you know, with presenting scholarships and.
Yeah.
Award spending. To follow up with the, you know, with presenting scholarships and awards. You're looking at all those.
Correct.
One school, I think it's in Illinois, has a, uh, drive-in movie theater. So they're going to use that and then have a video playing, which I think is, is great. We used to have one of the Vandal, but it would be great if we could use that.
We go up to, uh, Fort Eddy somewhere.
Yes, Fort Jefferson, yeah.
Eating alive by the mosquitoes. That was last time.
But it was, but I mean, it would be some very unique, I mean, they have.
I, yes, I've seen that. I, I love that. My mom serves me a bite every day. I really appreciate it. But yes, we're, we're continuing to work on those. Um, we'll get those planned. Now that we have a more definitive
Yeah.
likelihood, but I'm still
Well.
A little, yeah, I'd like to give it a couple of weeks in case certain things change. But it's, it's more than likely we're going to go to a different format.
I think so.
Alright.
Well, yeah. Motion to adjourn.
So we'll.
Roll call vote.
Do we have a vote call?
Yeah.
Who seconded that?
Julie.
Julie.
I made the motion.
Alright, uh, Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Martel? Mr. O'Donnell?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Degenner?
Yes.
Ms. Gotcha?
Yes.